East Dundee's regular meeting of the Board of Trustees dated Monday, November 7th, 2022. I've got six o'clock. Catherine, will you take the roll?
Trustee Coonsy.
Present.
Trustee Britton.
Here.
Trustee Saviano is not here. Trustee Tribber.
Here.
Trustee Sodder.
Here.
Trustee Mahoney.
Here.
And President Lang.
Here. And if you'll all rise and prepare for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its prime.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the board on an agenda item or a non-agenda item?
We have Ken Schaefer of the Dundee Township.
Ken, floor is yours.
I was just wondering, I did see on your item that you had the motion for real estate purchase on your agenda for later tonight, and I was just wondering whether or not action was going to be taken tonight, or if you have it there just as old business.
This is regarding 611?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it's going to be the first item on our agenda, so we're going to be chancing that over.
Okay, so just some concerns with outstanding issues with the township, which I believe you're aware of, so we'll see how this is going to finish off tonight, but we'll wait for that.
Yeah, and if you need the floor again later on, you got it. Sure, thank you. All right, that'll take us to our, oh, I'm sorry, was there anybody else? Yes, no? Okay. All right, that'll take us to our consent agenda if we can have a motion.
I have a question on the consent agenda. Should we move the item for getting the new attorney maybe to not consent agenda, to talk about it agenda?
Sure. Anything from the consent agenda can be moved to the consent agenda by the request of any member of the board. Okay, any other ones that anybody wants to move?
All right. Then I'll make a motion to item A, to move to approve the regular village board meeting minutes dated September 19th, 2022. Item C, move to approve a resolution approving the purchase of rock salt from Compass Materials America, Inc. in the amount of $38,000 for snow and ice control during the winter of 2022 and 2023. Item D, motion to approve an ordinance creating 158.07 of the Village based on D Village Code to allow for variation requests from the landscaping and tree preservation requirements in Chapter 158 of the Village Code to be heard by the zoning board of appeals. We will be moving item B to other agenda items.
Second.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Wait, wait, wait. I'm sorry, I had a quick question, because should the zoning board of appeals, should that be the zoning commission? Because, I mean, it's so within the code, zoning board of appeals is synonymous with the plan. That's all I needed, thank you. Sometime we will update it throughout. Perfect, thank you, sorry.
Same group.
Good question.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Tribber.
Yes.
Trustee Sodder.
Yes.
And Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to our regular agenda items. We'll start with item A, if we could have a motion.
When we move the item from consent?
Oh, we can do the consent agenda item then, if you would like to do that one first.
Okay, I move to approve a resolution appointing Elrod Friedman, LLP, as village attorney, and approval of an engagement agreement for attorney services for the Village of East Dundee, Illinois.
Second.
Second. Okay, discussion.
Well, reading the packet, you know, Elrod is in here, but nobody else is, and I know that we had considered other options, but none of those are presented to us. I guess my question is, why is that?
There were eight total submissions, I believe, and we could make them available to you via email or any other way that you would like them, just did not put them in there because they weren't selected.
Okay.
Or I should say recommended.
Yeah.
Do you want to table this or can?
I don't know if I want to slow it down, but I guess.
What's our timing, I guess, to Scott's question, what's our timing on this, if we were to table?
So.
And put it up until the next meeting?
There's, I do want to talk about our meeting schedule, because it seems like there's some people that are going to be out for the week of Thanksgiving, so that is when our next scheduled meeting is, November 21st, so if we were to table this, it would be on the December 3rd agenda, and really, I'm sorry, 5th, December 5th. There's not really a sense of urgency to it, other than, you know, some of the attorneys that have been assigned to us at our current firm are no longer with the firm, so that's been a little bit of something to navigate.
Yeah, no, I guess, I just wonder, though, why, like, when we did, for instance, and I saw you had that scorecard, but it wasn't filled out for them, it was just a blank scorecard, and we didn't get any of the other options with their scores or whatever, so I'm just wondering what the thought process was for selecting this particular group as the preferred option.
Sure, so I can take you through that process. So, we did do an initial scorecard with the first, with all the initial submissions, and there was four, four staff people who reviewed each application or submission, scored it, and from that scorecard, we took the top four, or three, four, and we interviewed three, and the fourth one was our current attorney, so we did not need to interview them, because we already know them. And then from the interview process, then staff had a discussion about, you know, what the needs were and where the strengths lie in the different firms and the presentations, and what we need and what we're, where we have gaps, and the decision was consensus of the staff that it was in the best interest of the village to go with this firm for multiple reasons that we thought were going to provide us the services that we were looking for at a timeframe that worked perhaps better than what we get now, and the cost would be relatively the same, so those were all the factors that led to our recommendation.
Okay. Other things to consider, too, are some of the areas of expertise with this particular firm, land acquisition, TIF management, and annexation, de-annexation, along with the billing structure, it was different, they were going to be the only firm that was going to allow us to acquire their services on a retain basis, so that just made budgeting easier.
Okay. I think one of the advantages we currently, our current attorney has a huge team that they confer with each other, you know, make sure they're getting the right decisions and all that. How big is the staff on Elrod?
I think it's 15, somewhere around 15, yeah.
Okay, and will they, I guess, will they be able to tap those other attorneys on our cases, or will we just have the one representative only that's working for us?
So there's just two attorneys that would be assigned to us, and then, yes, they, one of the things that they talked about was on, every Monday, they have a sort of round table, and they discuss things that are going down around the different communities, and then they share things that they've done in one place with the other, and then, you know, there's dialogue that benefits us based on what's happening other places, which, you know, is not uncommon amongst many of these firms, but we also have, I forgot what I was going to say, it was, we have currently roughly five attorneys that we work with at our current firm, and I would imagine that it would be similar situation at the other one.
Yeah, on this org chart, it looks like they've got six different attorneys that was in the plan for East Dundee, based on their different expertise, levels of expertise and what they do.
Two of them regularly.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Full time.
And not that it's ideal to change at any time, but I did want to point out that this is, there is no time commitment on this, so if we decide in six months that this was a terrible idea, we can always switch, and we can always do anything at any time.
Okay.
But if it works out, great.
It's not a long-term contract in all other ways, it's.
Month to month.
This is also not a reflection on our current attorneys, by any means, it's just as a matter of procedure, it's one of the, along with the auditors and so forth, we need to just keep rotating this out every four, eight years.
Okay.
Then, did I see that you were also going to be retaining the current for liquor control, and what was the thought process around that?
Just to shed some more light on that. Yeah, we do have a lot of backlog, I guess, in the liquor commission due to the fact that there wasn't any meetings held the last couple of years, and there's some issues that have arisen, so we just thought for consistency, it might be easier if we kept that with our current attorneys for the time being, and then, you know, see where we're at in six or nine months, and see if it makes sense to change at that point, but our list is, you know, is up to speed on everything.
Sure, yeah, would be.
Difficult to change it.
More work.
Yes.
Got it, okay.
Okay. Well, I don't, I don't need to table it personally, kind of, else feels like we should, we can, I just wanted to hear about it a little bit, that's fine.
But I will send you all the others tomorrow.
Okay, all right.
So, are we going to?
Yeah.
Call a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Call a motion?
Somebody needs to make the motion, because you pulled it off, so.
Oh, I thought somebody did.
I thought we read it in.
We didn't.
Oh, okay.
Technically.
I'll move to approve a resolution appointing Elrod Freeman, LLP, as village attorney, and approval of an engagement agreement for attorney services for the Village of East Dundee, Illinois.
Second.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Tribber.
Yes.
Trustee Sodder.
Yes.
And Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to item A of the other agenda items, if we could have a motion.
Move to approve an ordinance authorizing our real estate purchase and sales agreement with the Dundee Township Foundation, Inc. for 611 East Main Street, units 113, 121, and 222, comprising a part of the East Dundee Downtown Tax Increment Financing District.
Second. Any discussion?
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Tribber.
Yes.
Trustee Sodder.
Yes.
And Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Okay, that'll take us to item B of other agenda items, if we could have a motion.
I will make a motion to approve a resolution approving an insurance proposal from Alliant Insurance Services.
Second. Anybody have any questions or discussion on this? Is it Alliant, that's Alliant, Mesra, right? And they're, yeah, they're our current broker and have been for, what, less long time? Okay, so.
Yeah, it looks like it's a renewal.
So we're still happy with our services?
Well, I struggle with what it is we get, I mean, because the underwriter is actually the trust, the risk management trust, and the financial trust on it, so, I don't know, just, we call Alliant when we have a claim, I mean, it just seems like they're holding our hand for a lot of money. I mean, is the broker relationship absolutely necessary, I guess is what I'm wondering?
I use those to filter whatever we have going on here, I mean, I guess we could go directly to the companies, but that would be a lot more or not to have to try to pull all of their information.
Well, I have worked with them and met with them, actually, they're good people, but I'm just curious about the needs, so, but we have them, so we'll keep them. Anybody else have any questions, or?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. The future recommendations, can you just tell me a little bit more, there's like a little blurb in here, I guess.
For the technology?
Yeah.
Yes, so I'm sure you guys have all listened to the news and heard how water systems are being hacked, financial systems are being hacked, so as technology continues to evolve and hackers continue to get better with their skillset, our cybersecurity portion will continue to increase as we have to make accommodations for those different technological needs.
Okay, so is this something we should think about, like?
Budget.
I figure that's why it wasn't there.
So Helping Hands doesn't provide that?
They help with the recommendations from the cybersecurity companies, so they'll help to implement whatever decisions we or you guys decide to implement as support for purchasing, whatever IT or offering security services for us.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, what do we currently budget for cybersecurity, nothing?
We budget what we have historically paid for, and we've learned it for Helping Hands services, so no new initiatives have been budgeted for, I mean, we have our new security here and cameras that we've installed.
Right, but this is asking for cybersecurity.
Yes, so nothing related to that. This is the first year that they've been emphasizing the needs of budgeting futures.
I've seen the monthly statements from Helping Hands, and it appears that, you know, maybe 15% of our monthly bill is attributed to cybersecurity efforts on their behalf, which is mostly network monitoring and, you know, making sure that we're not vulnerable in certain parts of the network, but I imagine that what this insurance is going to want us to do in the relatively near future is implement, you know, things like two-factor authentication, where you get a text message when you want to log into your work email to like confirm your identity, and, you know, some other things, there will be some recommendations I'm sure we'll get. A lot of the stuff has been done, you know, moving a lot of the software to the cloud, not having it hosted on servers that are in this building, so that's, well, some of those things have been done in the last few years, but.
Well, I wonder if it would be a good idea to get a representative from Helping Hands to come in and talk about what they are currently doing for us in terms of cybersecurity, and then maybe we can talk about what we want to add, with them or with, you know, somebody else?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Well, 15% of our budget is going for that, I'd be curious to know what we're getting for it. I'm not crazy, but Helping Hands, to be quite honest with you, are good people, no doubt, but, you know.
My guess is it's not enough.
I've had my challenges.
Never enough.
There's no such thing as enough. But I've had email hacked and some other people in the village, and so, you know, if they can't control email, something, I don't want, I don't want to land for a water system, so.
Well, can this insurance, can Alliant also kind of give us some guidelines on what they're talking about within these future recommendations, so we're not poking around?
If I could, I think what they're doing is, you know how with health insurance, sometimes in order to get a certain kind of health insurance, you have to certify, you have a physical program, physical test program, I think what they're saying is they want the board to be aware that in the future, some of these lines of insurance may have requirements like the two-level.
Got it.
I think that's what they're saying, so to be prepared, I think, those things are going to be added to certain kinds of coverage.
But, and to that point, if they can, if they can give us some of the best in, either best-in-class or, you know, minimum coverage that they would recommend for somebody that would want for an entity like us.
Yeah, it's a broad topic.
So we're not poking around and doing something that isn't going to come up on what is going to come down the road.
Right.
Yeah, it might be out of Helping Hands' scope, but will we know, like, if they gave us some guidelines, that would be helpful.
We could certainly reach out to them and discuss it.
Hire a top-notch hacker, see what we can do.
All right, so.
Call the question?
Yeah, was there any other questions then, any other discussion? Catherine?
Call.
Oh.
Sorry.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Tribber.
Yes.
Trustee Sodder.
Yes.
And Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
That'll take us to item C, it's a discussion item, so, I'd like to read that in, so.
We'll have a discussion and give direction to staff regarding depot staffing levels for winter 2022 and '23 and associated financial responsibilities.
Second.
Well. Repeat, you want to finish this one?
Yeah, this is just a follow-up discussion to one we had earlier this year about what we'd like to do with the depot for the winter hours, you know, Bill is here, he's given us a proposal, interested to hear direction from the board and what you think we want to do going forward.
So, I, I want the depot open, like, that's a good thing, but this is starting to feel more like a village responsibility and not a township responsibility, and that's, I'd like to, I'd like to have this discussion as part of, like, what is the depot, you know, and what, you know, who's facilitating it, like, all of that, as opposed to just, I feel like this is the second time or third time in a year and a half that this has come before us, and that's, I'm struggling with it as a continuing, like, continuing to have one-off every six months or every so often, instead of just a resolution, like.
A comprehensive plan?
Yeah, I'd like, I would like a comprehensive plan, thank you, for the depot, because it's like, yes, I want, I would like this, but I don't want to keep having this conversation.
I think what I'd like, I talked to a couple people, I talked to Scott and a couple people, and I really like to try and do either a general village meeting or have it part of a bigger discussion on the usage of the depot property, and we, last year, we talked about having RFPs for the usage of the Saturday market, I understand there's other people besides the township that are interested in having a Saturday market, and we talked about that last year, it didn't really happen, but I think, it was also in January when we talked about it, and not now, so with that goal in mind, so that we can have these comprehensive conversations, and we can budget it for it, so I think we could do something, you know, either later this month, or as a general village meeting, or if we did and wanted to do it as a whole board, I don't know what other people are thinking about the depot in and of itself.
Definitely think it's something we should talk about, I like the idea of having a committee, yeah, committee, media. I don't know.
But you're welcome, anybody's welcome. Andy and Rich are on the general village committee.
At least one other.
Me.
Oh, you.
On the chair.
There you go.
That's why I'm calling it.
Take advantage of it, too, because so little comes before the general village. So.
It's all special events.
Don't pass up the opportunity.
Right, yeah, so, we can try and put something on the calendar, like, next week.
For December.
Or as a separate meeting, if you guys are around.
Sure.
Try and coordinate something like that to bring before the board and for the meeting on the 3rd.
Sounds good.
Or the 5th.
Or the 5th, yes.
And this doesn't, I mean, the restrooms are still open, it's just the depot itself, right?
Correct.
So it's, okay.
Bill, can you sit tight till then, or?
I'm here.
Can you sit tight till December 12, or 5?
Can I sit tight till this, what time?
Well, I think that, I think that whatever we decide to do going forward, that's going to be a decision for next year. We have to get to next year, so if this is just talking about getting us to spring.
This is our last stopgap into spring.
Yeah, I think we can, we can take, we can prove this.
Yeah.
And then talk about what we're going to do after that.
We've had a pretty good market the last two years, and financially, we're set for our 23rd season, for our own funding, we won't have a problem for funding the depot during our 23rd season, during the market, we're only concerned about the now until the end of April.
The off months.
Yeah. So, when you say that you're good starting next year, once the market opens again at Mother's Day weekend in May, is that for the whole week or, and the weekend?
No, it would be, it would be.
For the whole week?
Seven days.
Okay. All right, that's good to hear, congratulations.
It is, we've had a few rainouts on our Saturdays, which was tragic, and if it wasn't raining, it was wind or typhoon or something, but we did have a good season, so we're prepared for our 23rd season.
Okay.
So if this is a township function, is there any way to investigate, like, working with?
It's not, and it's not really the Dundee Township visitor center group is different than the township.
It's different than, like, all of the, okay, so it really is just our towns.
Yeah.
We own the village, that's all.
We're not.
We have the township for the depot, we have the township for the 611 building, and we have the township for the townships.
Okay, so it's really just the, yeah, it's, because it's not, like, it, we're not, we're not going to West Dundee or Carpenter'sville or anybody else for any of the funding, it's just, it's, it's East Dundees.
Yes.
Yeah.
I would like to add that we do keep a daily log of visitors, and from last year, from January until the end of April, we have a little over 400 in the lobby, and the restrooms are usually double that, but in those, in those four months, it was over 400 people that actually visited the depot, so I think it's important for you to know.
I do, too.
I'm all for a general committee.
Okay, and I'll let even, I'll let everybody, you know.
Great.
So anybody who wants to come and put their best thoughts forward can do that.
When were you thinking that would be?
Um.
Just because I'll be out Wednesday till Tuesday, like, this week to next week.
Okay, and it's Thanksgiving.
After Thanksgiving probably is.
After Thanksgiving?
Soon as I could, yeah.
Okay, maybe.
We have the 28th, 29th, and 30th.
Yeah, do you want to try and do the 29th, is good for me, at like 6?
November 29?
Mm-hmm. Is that okay?
The Tuesday after?
Yes.
Tuesday. Oh, I'll bring cake, it's not, it's not the first time I've had it, though. Um, the 28th, Monday, the 28th, would that work?
Oh.
So that, that Erica can have dinner, birthday dinner with her family and not with us, instead of us, even though I'd bring her cake.
Yeah, that's.
Monday, November 28th, at 6 o'clock.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanksgiving is the 24th, right?
Yes.
It's a Cyber Monday.
Yeah. All right, 28th at 6 o'clock.
Got it. Thank you.
General village meeting.
Good, all right.
And, cool, all right.
I guess that's it, it's not a voting.
We're not going to vote on this.
Oh, but we can vote if you wanted the stopgap between now and April, because you're right, what is.
Do we need to vote on that, Erica, or can you guys just deal with it without us?
Just give you directions to go ahead and.
Seems like there's general consensus to proceed, so Lance, you tell me if we need to vote.
Well, is it budgeting, is the, are the funds budgeted?
No.
It's $6,000, is it?
We do need a vote, but there isn't one on the agenda.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Right.
So that creates a separate issue, so, we really, you know, we really don't have anything on the agenda that would indicate we're providing funds for something.
So we need to do it on the next meeting?
Yep.
So, yeah.
Okay.
So we don't need to make that motion now?
So, we don't need to make that motion now, do we?
Well, you really can, is the problem.
You can.
Because the Open Meetings Act requires the agenda item to be, it's, that's the catch 22, we need to vote, but it's not sufficiently detailed to do it on this, on this agenda.
Okay.
It's asking rules. All right, okay, then, Nat, is there anybody else that would, no, precious? Okay, let's move on. Item D, who could have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve an ordinance amending the regulations relating to employee training and registration and relating to village right-of-way service endorsements.
Second. Second, great. All right, is this one you can, uh, let us do, or since it's right away, we'll do it your turn?
So, there's two, uh, two items that we're adding or adjusting on the code here. One of them is, uh, what we discussed our last meeting, the concept that we would do a manager training for operators of alcohol, or establishments that serve alcohol in the community. So, that would be something that would be conducted by the police department here once every two years, and we just feel like it would provide an opportunity for the police department and, you know, village staff to provide some expectations for responsible operation of establishments in the community, so that we can try to mitigate some of the issues that we've encountered over the last year. For the most part, you know, the, the operators do a, a pretty good job, but there's always an opportunity to continue the education and try to, um, help where we can. So, last time we talked about that, there was a general consensus to proceed and to draft that into ordinance form, so that is part of this ordinance. The other is that, um, right now, if you want to serve, Catherine, actually, I'm gonna ask you to explain this one, because I have a question about it.
Um, the right-of-way service, how it's written in the code currently is only allowed, you know, um, so when the vendors participate at the events over the summer, they need right-of-way service to be on our property. So, currently, the code is written that it is good February 1st through November 1st, if I'm remembering correctly. Oh, March, March 1st through November 1st. So, that doesn't allow for, for instance, Anvil Club is approaching for Dickinson Dundee, which is December 3rd, 2nd, to serve, you know, like, a Kindle Market drink, drinks, warm beverages. So, currently, the right-of-way service doesn't allow for that. Also, um, the right-of-way service says the licensee must be within 250 feet of, like, the depot grounds. Well, River Street Tavern isn't, Rosie's isn't, any other business around, it should be open, right, to any business. So, right now, that's how it's written in the code.
Okay, the 250 feet is how it's written then, so we want to eliminate that. Do we wanna, is, are we going, I didn't, I will admit, I did not read the actual code. Is there going to be something where it is sort of for village businesses, just not a specific number of feet? Like, it's still, you have to still be within the village, or?
We have to be a license holder.
Okay, understood, yeah.
Yeah, you have to hold a license even to have an endorsement.
Intolerant servers of alcohol there, available for licenses.
Okay, so are you asking if some, if the business from West Dundee can do this, or are you? Yeah, I mean, I, that was part, you know-
From some other village?
Yeah, I didn't know if the code was gonna be restricted, was gonna restrict in a different way besides just 250 feet.
Well, like Lance just said, um, it is kind of, you have to be a license holder of East Dundee to even, to even have an endorsement of sidewalk service or right-of-way service.
Okay, perfect.
It's like an expansion of each license, you have this option.
Yeah, yeah.
And any temporary license would indicate their ability to serve on that ground, so.
Does that eliminate a temporary license?
Should.
Then, no, okay.
So, my question about it was amended to section A, and it says the right-of-way service area shall be that portion of the village sidewalk or right-of-way adjacent to the premise. Is the, is the premise here the depot, or is, what's the premise?
Says of the licensee.
Right, so we're, what Catherine described to me doesn't sound like what this is.
Has to be adjacent to the premise of the licensee, which is not the depot. The, adjacent to the premise of the licensee is-
Right, that's just as bad, though.
I mean, I recall when this was created back in, like, 2013, 14, and it was specifically for our events and for the businesses surrounding the depot.
But what you're suggesting is that needs to be amended, because it's not worded properly based on what we just talked about.
Right, I mean, everything else didn't look good, I was just confused by that section.
So, yeah, let me understand, so the, so we want it to be broader than adjacent when these licensees come in, we want it to go for the whole depot area, or?
Well, we want- Go ahead. We want people who are not within 250, we want businesses who are not within 250 feet of the depot to also fall into this, right? That's, so like, we have businesses that are slightly further away than 250 feet, who we want to extend this right-of-way to, for them to be able to serve at the depot.
That part is okay, because we've eliminated the 250 feet, but it's the sidewalk that's available to each licensee is that part of the sidewalk that is adjacent to their property.
No.
And that's what we don't want, right? That's not too restrictive?
That's too restrictive.
So, we want them to be able to go well away from their property?
I mean, one of the licensees is streets away. One of, one of the businesses we're talking about here is blocks away from-
And where we want them to serve is in the depot.
Is in the depot.
Okay, all right, so, yeah, so that I understand now.
I mean, there could be a new business that comes in town that's off Route 25 that wants to participate.
Exactly, and we want to be able to extend this to them.
Can we, can we define the area as the depot? Like, it could be adjacent to their property or right-of-way that's-
Or the depot.
Or the right-of-way of the depot grounds?
Yeah, would that do it?
I think that would satisfy. Erica, would that satisfy?
So, we would be saying the right-of-way service area should be that portion of the village sidewalk or right-of-way adjacent to the premise, or adjacent to the depot grounds?
Yes.
Of the licensee, okay.
Yeah.
I see where, that, that would work.
Could you add that exact language, or adjacent?
Yes.
Adjacent to the premise of the licensee or adjacent to the depot?
To the depot.
I think we should put it in first, so the right-of-way service area shall be the depot grounds or that portion of this village sidewalk or right-of-way adjacent to the premise.
Okay.
Okay.
And that says Catherine has that language, you can adopt it.
Do I need to amend my motion?
Yeah, to include the amended language that was discussed here.
Okay, so I will amend my motion to, uh, I'm sorry, I will, I will amend my motion regarding the ordinance relating to village right-of-way service endorsements to include the language, um, that we have adjusted for item A.
Section 21A.
Section 21A.
Of section 116.05, and Catherine has the exact language, and we'll put adjacent to the depot first.
Okay.
Do we need an amended second?
Trusty Tribber?
Yeah, we need a second, is that?
Second.
Now we're good.
Good enough. Is there any other questions or discussion?
No. One other question on the, uh, the training for the bars, for the alcohol awareness manager training. I was wondering if we could hear a little from the chief as to what this is for, like, the concern that I have that we talked out of, is this just another thing that they are already trained on and it just is more red tape, or what is the value of this program?
Thank you for the question. So, so what we're trying to do is just make sure that we've set expectations and what the understanding is with the management, because managers from different facilities may not always work in East Dundee, or we have some organizations in town where they have multiple locations, some in East Dundee, some in other communities, and what our expectations are here in our village in regards to our local code, as well as state statute, and what our levels of tolerance are, and what our, and what we want our licensed liquor holders to be able to perform. So, I think it helps set those, I think it helps make sure that everybody's on the same page, you know, because we're not just talking about state statute, but we're talking about also our local code when it comes to times, enforcement, liquor leading establishments, and some of those other nuances with our liquor code that would be specific to East Dundee.
Okay, so these aren't all things that go over in basic training, it's stuff that's more local specific, that it's stuff they might not know, like, is it the times that bars open and close that's specific to us versus the next town and things like that?
I think that would be certainly a portion of it, uh, but also, I think it really helps us and puts us on a solid footing to set those expectations, so that way, if there is a violation, uh, management can't say they weren't aware of it, or should have known, or could have known, but that we've done everything and done our due diligence to make sure that their management is aware of what the rules of engagement are.
Okay.
Give you a chance to tell, um, managers what, uh, what ordinances have been violated over the last two years, say, you know, specifically, so that they know, you know, we actually mean it, you know?
Yeah, certainly, we can talk about what's public record and have a conversation, and maybe some, uh, scenario-based. If you do this, this may happen.
And it gives them an opportunity, the establishment an opportunity to raise any questions that they may not, you know, fully understand as well, so I just think keeping it in the forefront is a good idea.
Thank you, yeah, and I think it just, again, to that point, to really have that communication, that open dialogue, and, uh, you know, be able to sit down with managers from each establishment at least every other year, and we'll also video it, so that way, if there is somebody new comes in, that, uh, that they'd be able to view it, and I think will really help with, you know, just maintaining, uh, you know, the, the community's standards.
Can I ask a quick?
You go first. I, I like this approach as being more of a proactive, comprehensive approach, creating relationships with the different, um, managers within the different establishments we have in the village, putting a face to the police department as a partnership, you know, somebody that they can count on as, as a partner in helping them, um, keep their, their business secure, um, and somebody that, you know, they can count on when, if, if, and when something goes bad. And so, I, I really appreciate the fact that you're trying to bring this forward and bring it into such a proactive kind of, and I, I think that's the way it really needs to be, I think that's the intention, and the way that needs to be billed is not, you know, not another hurdle, but we're gonna, we're gonna help you stay in line, safe, um, and, and not fall into any traps with, you know, issues, um, that would violate your license.
And then my, my intention is also to collaborate with the village clerk's office, so that way, some of the, the work that she needs, has to do every year, and kind of get behind people to get them to comply with getting stuff into her and stuff, so that way, that'll make it easier for her office as well.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I'm not running blind here either, because the chief has had experience doing this with local, correct?
That's right.
So, it'd be, uh, we've got a seasoned program here, so hopefully we'll be able to hit the ground running on this.
You, you mentioned that it would be offered every two years and that it would be recorded. Would you expect, like, new managers, new people, people who couldn't make, who didn't make the last one to come in and watch the recording?
So, I think that's what we would strongly encourage, you know, the choir would be used that somebody every other year would at least have been, have participated, so that way, and they would have had to sign in, so that way, the clerk is aware that they met that requirement, that they met the ordinance.
Great, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Okay, is there any further discussion points? Catherine?
Trusty Coonsey?
Yes.
Trusty Britton?
Yes.
Trusty Tribber?
Yes.
Trusty Soder?
Yes.
And Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is our financial reports, warrants list, that number is way too big for me to handle, so I'm not even gonna look at it. Any questions can go to-
There's good reasons for it.
Any questions can go to Brandis and/or Erica, and we'll start with our reports. Andy, start with you.
Uh, the Arts Council met recently, we did get, there was a long delay in getting paint for the crosswalk art program, but we do have that now, but we're gonna be waiting until the spring, just because we don't want to paint right as the leaves are covering it and then the snow. So, that will be something that happens in the spring. We also, uh, Brandis did an amazing job on the RFQ for looking for mural artists, and that will be ready very soon. We're just putting the final touches on that, so that we'll start getting interest from artists to, uh, paint on that wall that is formerly the SiMet building and currently the Spirit Hardwoods, um, building. That is all.
Is that behind the wall facing the river, or?
Yeah, facing the trail, yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool, cool.
Where the big smokestack is.
Right, right, and there's two fairly good-sized windows on that wall, but I talked to Pete Pearson, who owns the building, and he's willing to board those up, because-
He just changed those windows out. We just paid a lot of money, they got a grant and everything.
It would be, uh, it would be a temporary cover, just to sheet it up, but, um, it's not gonna affect Skip's business, so I don't think there'll be any problems with it.
All right.
Because right now, if you take a look at the windows, you see lumber stacked up against the windows, so it's not gonna be a problem if we, uh, if we just cover it, so we'll talk about that, too.
And one more Arts Council announcement is that we do have a Arts Council Facebook page that will be starting up to, uh, share photos of progress as we're doing these paint projects, um, and then we also have an, uh, a survey out to the community, asking everyone what kind of artwork they would like to see in the, in the town, so if you haven't filled that out yet and you are a resident, please fill it out, and, uh, that will be used to help decide future projects.
Is that on the, um, will that also be in the newsletter?
Yes.
That goes out?
Okay.
This week? Awesome.
All right, that's all. Trusty Tribber, what you got?
No report.
All right, Trusty Coonsey?
Um, no report.
Trusty Mahoney?
Um, just some follow-up and some feedback, um, down at the last depot market and talking to a lot of the residents and, and vendors that were there, um, to wrap up for the winter. And, um, and between our last meeting and, and that, um, uh, last market, I heard from several residents, um, asking about what was going on with the gravel road, in addition to the, the resident that emailed, Chris, about that. And, um, there's not, there's definitely concern about that, um, so, on, for residents, you know, having to bear the cost and other unintended, um, consequences that would happen with water maintenance and that type of thing, um, because when you put a hard surface over something that is permeable, you, you end up with issues with that. We had something like that up in our neighborhood, um, when a new house was put in about 15 years ago, so, um, uh, I would, I want, as we, um, move forward with talking about some of the recommendations and, and that kind of thing, I would highly suggest that we also look at just looking at standards that we would put around gravel driveways and, and, and that are existing, the grandfathered gravel driveways that are existing, instead of trying to put the burden of, of, um, paving residential driveways that have been, um, grandfathered in. And, um, we also talked, uh, we also talked about, um, one of the, one of the, um, vendors at, at the market also lives in the village, and they were asking about residential facade matching grants, and I said, that's, that's interesting, because we were just talking about that. They, um, have a house up on Hill Street, and they are doing a big paint job at, to the $250,000, and so, um, and it's, it is an older, older beautiful house, but, and they want to keep it up.
Yeah.
But it's a big, it's a big bill, so they were definitely looking into that and want, and, um, if we can make sure that when we're working on our budget and those programs, that we can take a look at having that included. That's it.
Okay, Trusty Britton?
Um, a couple things from last month, um, the Chamber of Commerce Center was way back, like, a month ago, um, we had some awesome community awards that were, I don't know, did this get brought up in the last meeting, and I'm repeating myself? Okay, um, so, the Community Service Award went out to Jeff Previsor, um, and then, awesomely, we had two of- we had two of our businesses that won awards. Black and Gray actually won Business of the Year with the chamber, and Anvil Club won the Customer Service Award, so congratulations to all of our local nominees and our winners. Um, and also, based on what you mentioned about maybe or maybe not having another meeting this month, just in case we don't have another meeting this month, Dickens and Dundee is coming up, um, December 2nd and 3rd, and we have a new lights parade this year, which will be a lot of fun, so.
So the Saturday mor-
Saturday night parade.
Saturday morning parade is not happening, so don't show up on 72.
Yes. They'll be disappointed. You will be called, come back at night. Come back at night.
Okay.
Mr. Malina?
Report.
Chief.
Nothing for that.
Okay, Brandis?
Um, we are wrapping up the audit, um, so hopefully we'll have something at the first or second meeting in December. We'll see how far we can get.
Okay, great. Are we still changing our calendar? We talked about doing that last budget that we were gonna-
Next, 2023.
Yeah, but it starts in February, correct? The budget process for us starts in February?
Uh, we'll be starting as soon as I wrap up the audit.
Cool. That was it? Joe?
No.
No. Phil? Franco?
Nothing.
Okay. I, I just got a couple things, um, we had a, a new business, Brianna's opened up, uh, in the old manor restaurant, uh, to some acclaim, uh, the place has been packed every day I've gone by it. And I spoke to Melissa Hernandez over at the North King, Northern King County Chamber of Commerce, so we'll be doing a ribbon cutting for that real soon. Just the Dickens and Dundee, as Sarah had mentioned, don't wanna miss that, that's our 34th annual, so come one, come all. And Phil, I've got a question for you concerning recent King, a patch there, getting a lot of push in my neighborhood for it.
This week.
Where are we? It's this week? Okay. Great. Okay.
They're a little narrow, but they're, they're, they're squeezing it in.
Alright, that's great, that's, that's gonna make a few people very happy. Uh, and then that Water Street Loop is gonna be, what, in spring then? Alright, that was all I had, and leaves us to Erica.
No report?
No report, alright. Okay, well, we are going to adjourn and do an executive session, and if I could have a me, a motion, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out, um, don't have to go home. Lance, David?
Uh, what, what are we using?
C5 and C6.
Okay. I will move to close to a, uh, executive session, uh, close to the public and media under the provisions of the Illinois Open Meeting Act, uh, I, 5ILCS 120 slash 2, C5, acquisition of property, and C6, sale of property. We will adjourn out of executive session, not return to public session.
Okay.
Catherine?
Trusty Coonsey?
Yes.
Trusty Britton?
Yes.
Trusty Triber?
Yes.
Trusty Soder?
Yes.
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
And President Lino?
Yes.